Hi, Brian. I've got you in now.
Okay.
All right, we'll mute you for a second.
I'm gonna mute you too.
Okay.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian is on the line, Mr. Mason.
Glad to have you there soon. If I want to speak to the board. I'm sorry, should we call?
You can do a roll call if you want to.
Okay. Dr. Miller.
Here.
Dr. Vaughn here. And Ms. Stewart.
Absent.
Here.
Okay, we're ready for your presentation.
And.
And you all had a pretty nice, and there's a timer here that's gonna give us a tell.
Can you sing? It'll get me.
My name's Ashley Perry, and I'm just here to complain about the double standards at the high school. I'm not staying at my son's party. God knows he's not. But two times this year, he's gotten in trouble for making messes at school on two separate occasions. One, he was mixing his food on his tray in the lunchroom, got in trouble, got two days detention because of making a mess. And then, just a few weeks ago, he was smashing an apple on his head, got in trouble because they did, him and his buddies did it. They videoed it in the bathroom, which I understand getting in trouble shouldn't have your phone out in the bathroom. He got detention for that. The video was deleted before I ever got to see the video from the children's phone. But it was uploaded to a parent's cloud storage. Parents sent me the video. Apple did not make a mess. I called in to talk to Mr. Cutnam about the senior prank of the confetti all over the office. And I was a little upset, but I was told if my son got in trouble for making a mess in the school again, he could get suspended for vandalism. And I didn't feel that that was right, that he was threatened with suspension over vandalism for making a mess with seniors with adult supervision could go in, confetti the office, and toilet paper, and not toilet paper, and sarin wrap the toilet seats. My son got in trouble for a prank and shenanigans in the bathroom, even though it was not adult supervised, that shouldn't have went on either. And Mr. Putnam told me that he even had to put on gloves to go in and remove it. And I'm not saying seniors should be not allowed to do their pranks or their last hurrahs for the year. But if my eighth grader has to be looked at as somebody to be a role model for the sixth and seventh graders, I think the seniors should be held responsible too for all the other underclassmen under there. They're going out into the world to be adults, not to do child pranks. But my eighth grader is acting a little weird. And also, Mr. Putnam told me that he was trying to make the place better because the principal last year had other agendas on his mind than students. I don't know what that meant. But I didn't know that that needed to be said, pointing out one specific principle, but the high schools had multiple principles. Even when I attended school there, there was several different principles that we went through. And I would just like to have him admit that he is running a double standard high school. It is fair for one group of students to do what they want to do, but another group of students can't do what they want. And that's just my opinion on how the school is being run, with the double standards that's going on. And the slandering of former principals shouldn't be happening on. Thank you for your time.
That's just the only one I have on the line, too. We'll continue on in the finish of the May ninth, yeah, team meeting. On May the ninth, responding to the May meeting, we just had a motion to approve our group of votes. And for those who are skeptical, if them are included, we may invite both of these, Mr. Aaron and Mrs. Gadsden. All those in favor? I have. Very good report, I guess, playing it up a bit.
Tonight, for the standards report, I still have my annual report from April. And I'll get that out to the public first, we need to. What I have for you tonight is the schedule of checks to be written. One purchase over 5,000, I believe Ms. Mason sent her the letter explaining what that purchase was. Possibly the schedule of checks to be written.
There's no question about entertaining the ocean to prove the changes in corporate.
Don't move.
It moved in seconds, it's a discussion. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Does that include the purchase on the past day? Okay. We have none at this time, but we do have people that's going to present, so.
We'll have to ask people, some of the school people.
I just wanted to come back and give you a final update on after-school at Wildcat University and how everything turned out. The program was 118 days, which is the requirement. It started September 7th and ended May the 17th. We had some students who attended, as many as 105 of the 107. So that's something to be very proud of, yes. There were 35 students who participated in the after-school program, like 25 completing the program on May 17th. Second through fifth graders worked to earn 350 100% AR Wildcat halls. And those are displayed in the cafeteria. Those are the 100% that they made on accelerated reader quizzes in the after-school program. So that's something else we're proud of. And when they illustrate, when the after-school students draw anything pertaining to their cafeteria, they draw those Wildcat halls in their illustrations. That's important to them. Star data, our early literacy star data came first, reading second and fifth, and our math data first and fifth. All of those scores for our after-school kids increased 7,018 points on the scale scores. So we all saw progress and we're very proud. We celebrated our scale scores increases with pies in the face. Mrs. Foster and I, we took pies in the face. We also have our own Starbucks store, and so each of the children, we're in a Wildcat University, yes, I can print money, Starbucks, and we had a store and they were able to join, and based on how many points they get increased, we have students who received as much as $49, that's how many points their star scores went up, to as much as $458. So they were able to spend that. Some of them did not spend it all, so we put it into their savings account for next year. So they'll be ready to purchase next year. The advisory council will be meeting for its fourth and final time this school year on May the 25th. Members of this committee include Lingle State University, Calvin Banks, WV extension office, our Title I, Gilmer FRN, the administration, parents, teachers. So it's a really good group of folks who are supporting our after-school program. We have some great discussions and come up with some good ideas. One of the ideas I have for next year, I would love to see is purchase t-shirts to help promote our after-school program. I would also like to develop an ambassador program where our Wildcats could then go out and speak, such as this. Or speak, I would ask to speak at Delta Kappa throughout the year. So there's just places they can go and speak about their after-school program. And then also, at the Title I parent meeting Mrs. Mason had, there were some parents who expressed that they wish attendance, they would love for their children to participate, that they felt like they really needed to be there the whole time. And that's not true, and I just need to communicate that better. And when you're looking at 118 days, there's days built in there for students to participate in church on Wednesday nights or to participate in sports. They can be a part of those other enrichment programs. 21st Century supports that. So we'll make that information for parents, thanks for that. So that's kind of the wrap-up on Wildcat University. I'm in the between right now because we're getting ready for summer boost vacation. And our theme for the year is Wild Wonderful West Virginia. Our students at Gilmer Elementary receive their invitation ladders on March 7th or 8th. Currently, we have 66 who are planning to come this summer, kindergarten through fifth grade. Breakfast will be at 8:00, class rotations 8:30 to 11:30, every 30 minutes they need. Over that time, they'll have an hour of math, they'll have an hour of reading, have a half hour of games. So we're continuing to focus on those academics in the morning. Then they'll go into team building, 11:30 to 12:30, and this is where you do the crazy camp stuff. So I'm kind of excited. I'm hoping to have a campfire. If you hear there's a campfire at the school, it will not be real, I promise, but I'm hoping. I've got to come up with that. The afternoons, we will have 45 minutes and 30 minutes. The 45 minutes is split into three weeks of STEM and then three weeks of community service. And hoping on that community service, we might reach out to some of our organizations in our community that are service and have those folks to come and talk about their program. I don't know if our students really understand what is community service and how much of that takes place in our community. So that's just a thought. Then the 30 minutes, we would split three weeks, the children will be in the high tunnel, working with our vegetables and fruits, and then three weeks of enrichment, and that's my, really got to get that enrichment nailed down. I'd love for that to be some of our West Virginia heritage and culture. It's a very short one, it's only 30 minutes right at the end of the day, but I need to work with developing that. High Tunnel, we actually sent invitations, and students who are in this program for the summer came Friday. They worked with Daisy Bailey for the extension office and myself. We planted tomatoes, peppers, zucchini, and strawberries. We have nine classrooms that have been utilizing that space this spring, so once their beds are cleaned out, turnips, radishes, kale, lettuce, then we will add to those beds cucumbers, some more peppers and tomatoes, some squash, and then the outside beds, we have three outside beds, we're gonna plant pumpkins that can be used for decorative purposes in the fall. We're gonna have a running club, and I am not leading that, but Mr. Price will be leading that. So he'll be showing up twice a week. Mr. Price is gonna help with it, and we're gonna get some kids running. I just think we've got some kids who are disciplined for running in the hall, so let's just put that.
Read her in.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna show the purpose for that. So we're gonna start a running club, and yes, we're excited about that, hoping. Mrs. Mason even suggested that maybe we could use the bands and take this group and go over to the complex where they can actually see a community running track. But that will be like week five or six, we're not gonna start out doing that. So anyway, we will be having a running club. The Mount Airy Food Bank is gonna come twice this summer and offer pop-up markets. Our students will be able to purchase produce for their families, so that'll be something special. We're hoping to take field trips on Fridays to the state parks. I mean, I lived in Europe, I have stood on the Eiffel Tower, I have seen the French House. So I'm telling you, there's no place on earth like West Virginia. I am a very proud West Virginia girl. So we're gonna visit some beautiful places in West Virginia. Friday, May 20th, yeah, we did the planting. Ms. April will be the cook, and I hope to have some fun with food. Because again, you know, you can do things in the summer you normally can't do during school year. So we're hoping to have some fruit skewers. Now, this did come from after-school. I had a child that took orange slices and stuffed them on the end of his plastic spoon, which is creative but not appropriate, so we're gonna take that, redirect, and do fruit skewers this summer. And then I hope to have like a baked potato bar one week, a nacho bar one week, but each week have something fun with our foods. So we're excited about that. The high school is also providing a summer program, and they will go with us on four of our five field trips. And currently, they have 27 students registered. So, good things in the open.
Exhibition, coal mine.
Oh, yes.
Bentley, Mike, just a little bit further.
Yeah.
And you talked about history, the mine wars.
Yes, yes.
It's always a big interest.
And the movie Maton was made, we lived in that, and there were people in like community board in that industry. And some of the production team came board church, and so.
We were the only time the United States was ever gonna bomb itself, so, in West Virginia.
Because I've only heard that that's the school process. And the only question I would ask, are we particularly related to that?
Yes. We are, we are. And I'm processing the data. Sarah Webber is coming to spend all day Wednesday with me. There's some paperwork we need to do to reapply for 21st Century grants. Yes, the students that need to be coming are coming academically, the students who need to be. But then also, and I've said this before, we have students that have found their place. They, they, they love after-school because they are not an athlete. And they are not an academic, but socially, this is their place. This is their club. And they get to be the leader. And of course, 4H is part of that. We become a 4H club. That's also part of. In fact, Mr. Price, we had talked about, I have a couple of fifth graders who, even though they will be going on to middle school, we have invited them to return and be a part of our 4H club as sixth graders. So, and that's appropriate. We can offer that once a month and try the bus and come and join us at after-school Wildcat.
Such a great fun.
Yes, it's a whole team effort. We got lots of folks involved, though. Oh, great, okay. Yes. Whatever your interests. That'd be great. I'll put that on my calendar. Thank you.
This West is hard to follow. And she had talked about things that were going to go on during the summer, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of another program that we have. As Wes mentioned, summer boost, and that is for those kindergarten to the fifth grade students. But another program that we have is only a three-day program, but it's called KinderBoost. And we did this last year for students that are transitioning from preschool into kindergarten for the next school year. So we had our preschool ceremony today, and I got to speak to those parents today about this program. This is gonna take place on June 8th, 9th, and 10th. We have our three kindergarten teachers, there's classroom aides there as well. It is in conjunction with Save the Children, so they have some curriculum that they also fund, that they put a substantial amount of money into the activities and the things that we will do for this, for these three days. Parent involvement activities as well. We are not running buses, so if parents have to bring their children for this, but we will provide meals. We will provide a breakfast and a lunch and a snack. Ms. Fraser? But it is, it is an excellent opportunity to help with that transition from preschool to kindergarten. We have some students that have, are gonna start in kindergarten that have not been enrolled in preschool. They can attend this if we get them enrolled. So we've started our getting information out about that today by sending home those packets. I'm also gonna put that on our social media. We need to get those things back by about June 3rd. That should give us enough time to get an accurate count on things, but we're really excited to do that. Tomorrow is our fifth grade ceremony. That's a big deal in Gilmore County Elementary School. Our staff and students have been practicing for that. I was a part of that practice this afternoon, and I can tell you that they're taking it very seriously. That's tomorrow, I believe, at 1:00 at Gilmore County Elementary School. I think if you guys are interested in attending, I would love for the board to show up if you have time, and you're all very busy. But if you can, you'll love it. We also had our preschool ceremony today. They were a little bit more rallied, they were a little bit more excited, but it was a very good ceremony. We had a lot of parents there and family to celebrate with us. We had lots of trips this past couple of weeks, and I think in the future and in the past, we didn't do this many trips at one time, but we have to kind of remember where we're at at this point in the school year as to why we're taking so many trips. This time last year, we couldn't have people in a room together. We weren't allowed to have a fifth grade ceremony where the people were in the gymnasium. So we're, as we're kind of inching toward this, you know, back to this state of normal, it all came up, hey, look, we need to do some field trips. These kids haven't had field trips in a long time. So we have done a lot in a short amount of time. The after-school Wildcat University took a field trip to Cedar Creek. We took our fifth grade students to Skyzone. We took the whole school to the Upsher Cinema 6 movie theater, and that was really an awesome field trip. The honor club went to Kennywood. Mrs. Campbell, our special education teacher, took some of our students to the Hobart Zoo, which was a phenomenal field trip. So lots of field trips in a short amount of time. It was worth the headache. But hopefully, we can space those out a little bit more evenly throughout next school year. I know I will look forward to that. We had some visitors. We had Miss West Virginia, and I'm gonna state her title wrong. I think it was Miss Outstanding Team West Virginia. There are a lot of those titles, so I hope I said that correctly. But they delivered a message to our students last week that we thought was very positive. It was about a positive mindset, the importance of keeping a positive mindset, positive affirmations, talking to ourselves in a positive way, and they delivered this message in a very developmentally appropriate way. And our students seemed to receive it very well, and I thought it was a very, a very positive experience. We had some awesome concert. We had awesome things going on at school. We had an awesome band choir concert that Mrs. Leggett and her band and choir students put together, and it was phenomenal. And then we had a preschool and a kindergarten show. It was, it was quite the show. I don't know if anybody had any preschool or kindergarten, but it was awesome. All right, last thing, and I guess maybe a more serious note here. I just want to make you all aware of something that has been a discussion at Gilmore County Elementary School for a while, and we're gonna move on this, and I want to bring it to you guys as a board for the next June 13th meeting. And that is a floor covering system of Gilmore County Elementary School. So we do a lot of things in our gymnasium other than PE class and basketball. We also do our community luncheon, our family luncheon that we did. We bring in students. Tomorrow, for example, we're going to have our fifth grade students in chairs in the middle of our gymnasium. And one thing I will say about that gymnasium is it has one of the nicest-looking floors of any gymnasium that I think you're gonna find around. And we, I think we owe it to everybody to protect that gym floor. When we use things like chairs and tables in there, we need to be able to cover that floor from time to time. Not every time we're gonna walk on it, of course, but when we're doing events where we might have heavy tables or traffic or, or a lot of things like that, we need to be able to cover that floor. I believe that the high school has a system in place up there. I've talked with our PE teachers. They have been very supportive and instrumental in moving this forward. And when I say instrumental, kind of poking me with a stick, hey, let's do this, let's move on this. So I've had lots of discussion with folks about this. That will be a purchase of over $5,000. I'm working, I've got three companies that we're working with now, trying to make sure that all of their quotes are equally matched. It's impossible right now, or at least I'm finding it impossible, to get every material to be exact, but we're getting it pretty close. So we're looking at a light gray floor covering, so that when we put this system out, it covers the entire gymnasium floor in a vinyl canvas, heavy, sort of a textured material, so it doesn't move around, it won't slip up and bite. You know, when we had our community lunch, our family lunch a few weeks ago, we put a tarp down. The system I have is just large tarp's. And with that, it's a lot of overlap, so it's a trip hazard. When things get, you know, it scrunches up a little bit, you move the table, you move the chair, it becomes a trip hazard, and we don't want anybody getting hurt. It's also very labor-intensive. So to roll these mats up, somebody physically has to lap them over and over and over, and they're not your average tarp. They're huge. So this system will allow us, it will have a winder that plugs into the, to the wall. You'll physically pull it out by releasing the winder, and then when you want to put it up, you simply line it up and start the winder, and it rolls it back in. So it's not something that is gonna be labor-intensive. Basically, we don't want anybody to get hurt trying to wind these things up. So we think it's a good investment for the school. I do anticipate that being on the, the next board agenda. I gave Ms. Lowler a heads-up on that. I just wanted you guys to hear from me. I'll provide you all the information for those quotes. But if there are no questions, I'd be glad to ask, I would be delighted. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So I wanted to update you all on some of the things we've been doing with M3T at the high schools in the last one, I talked to you guys. Um, I'm finishing up, for those of you that don't know, I'm finishing up my second year of a five-year fellowship in Mount Airy Mathematics Master Teacher Fellowship. I was selected two years ago to do this through an application process. Currently, M3T serves in only 21 of the 55 counties of West Virginia. Some larger counties have multiple fellows. We just have one here in Gilmer. When I pointed out the last time I was here as well, is that there is no county that surrounds us that has a fellow either. So we're like the only, we're like the lonely island in the middle of the state right now. But currently, Melissa Jones was here with me last time, and she serves on my local improvement team, as does Morgan Allen, to sixth grade. We're hoping next year that our new eighth-grade math teacher wants to onboard with us and to hopefully bring in our other two high school teachers as well. What we spent the last month doing, we presented at WBCTM, and what we spent the last month doing was kind of tying up loose ends with our PDSA cycles of the Craves acronym that we've been using in class, which is a tool, a skill that the kids have learned, to summarize their answers verbally to think more critically when they're answering math questions. And what we started to turn to is sort of a vertical alignment of specifically the heart of algebra standards that are on the SAT. And what we've decided to look at from the top down is vocabulary that you learn in sixth grade that carries all the way through to when you take the SAT in 11th grade and even into your senior year of high school. even into your senior year of high school. So, we broke down those middle school standards first and looked at the unit rates, ratios, proportional relationships, and equations standards that we all teach in those three grade levels. We identified key vocabulary, and then from there, we put that together with vocabulary from SAT questions. SAT mostly focuses on Algebra I and a little bit of Algebra II standards, so we decided to not hone in on those individual high school math classes, but just look at SAT-type questions. And the goal is, is to not only like put some sort of like poster in our classrooms, but to also make sure that this vocabulary is on every single assessment that we give the entire school year next year, starting in January, actually. We want to give teachers the time to teach that stuff in the fall and then beginning in January, whether it's a question for them to actually solve or whether it's simply just some vocabulary questions for them to answer, but to really make sure that as a math department as a whole, we are looking at those vocabulary terms and standards that those kids carry from sixth grade all the way up through high school. So, when we meet back together in August, because Ms. Lowler has been fantastic enough to not only sign the MLE from M3T that allows me to continue my fellowship, but also allows us to be a full in county. Counties do not have to finance or even allow a local improvement team to happen, and Ms. Lowler signed that the other day and sent it off to WVU. I got a copy of it as well. So, we are once again a full in county that all these teachers that work with me in the afternoons, after school, when we meet, will be compensated for their time. When we go to present at conferences together with the team, Gilmer County Schools will pay for subs and conference registrations and anything else that we can give in support of this. So, I appreciate your support in that, as well as administration of the high school as well. And what I wanted Morgan to talk to you about was her experience with that, because this is Morgan's first year teaching math in her own classroom. When she taught, I'm going to talk over her right now, watch this. But she was in Calhoun, she taught English, she has math degree, so they had her teach English in Calhoun. This went out. And then when she came to Gilmer last year, she co-taught with me. Morgan graduated from Global State College, and she still taught under me. But this was her first year in her own math classroom, and I was like, hey, you're going to do all the secondary work with us. We're going to see what happens. So, I wanted her to tell you about her experience with it.
Yeah, so it was a phenomenal experience for me, because not only did I get to work with Kelly, you know, partner teacher mentor, but I got to work with all kinds of math teachers across the state. My level, high school level, above me just a little bit in middle school, sixth grade teachers, and I got to see their problems and their issues and talk about what they're doing in class and ways that they have overcame issues and things that they tried and seeing what I could tweak and use. And it was just so great to just sit and listen and soak everything in from those teachers and everything. And you know, without this M3T, I would not have had that chance. So, it was, it was just so good for me. It was so awesome.
So, we should like, we just wanted to update you guys when we're done, finish out the school year, but if you don't have any questions, then.
Just a thought, because the elementary school next year will be going to content, right? So, we'll have actual math teachers. Hopefully be able to work with you all and.
I literally had this conversation with Tracy and all between 4:00 and 4:30 today. And we were talking about how Shelley does our standard PE dives, where grade levels get together, they, they dive into their standards, but it's going to look different next year because we'll be able to do that as a department and staff, and so that doesn't have to stop the fifth grade that go.
Yeah. I'd be able to target what needs targeted based on the assessments, so you have to go back and see where the issue starts and learn new ways to work together.
Right, and I'd be very happy to have that same conversation actually with each other, because she said, like, I want, now that, I think she's going to be teaching math, and she says, I want to come up and see what you guys are doing and see how you're teaching math in middle school and to see how we can, you know, do the thing that we want to maybe change or elevate the school a little bit. Absolutely. And I wanted to mention one other thing, Mr. Price.
Listen, so, and I know we're just going to go with this. You know, I was, I was going to let John in the high school have that one. It says M3T, so just so you know, we had an awesome activity where the middle school math teachers came to the elementary.
It was wonderful.
I was trying to throw them a bone and let them have it. It wasn't out of the palace, but it was an amazing time. They collected statistics from the games that students played. I wasn't trying to steal any kind of, I was just trying to let them have one, and here we are. So, I'm sorry. It was not, it was not intentional, and I honestly.
Speak of the devil. John's trying to get in now.
But no, we did seventh and eighth grade got together, and we decided all the kids made a carnival-like game, and they built it completely out of cardboard and everything. And my room and Ms. McCafferty's room absolutely looked like a bomb went off in it for an entire week, but stuff is messy, so it's okay. And the kids had to design it around probability, so it wasn't just make a game and let's have fun. That was a part of it, absolutely, but the kids were responsible for calculating their theoretical probabilities of their game and then collecting data to actually compare it to their experimental probabilities. So, we had a tester day with sixth grade, and we let sixth grade come play some games during their math class, but then we brought every seventh and eighth grader and all of their games over to the elementary school and set up in the gym, and we gave seventh and third grade an hour to play, and we gave fourth and fifth grade an hour to play. And our kids had a great time with it. They bought prizes for the kids at the elementary school and gave out stickers and temporary tattoos and bubbles and stamps, you're welcome, parents, and little lollipops and whatever. And the kids at, at middle school had a great time with it. We gave out our PBIS tickets, so you can ask Ms. Allen how many times she's either been taped to the wall this week or boozled. She ate a butter jelly bean today and spent the rest of her day sucking on a peppermint. So, that's her, her day has been today, but it was great, and we, we've talked about it with Mr. Price and Mr. Fox about it as well, that we plan on doing that every single year. We plan on putting those kids in that position again after testing to create this and bring that over to the elementary and interact with them in that little room.
It was awesome.
It was good.
Shelley, showing great opportunity to improve, yeah, if you have a test. And thirty goes to all the other math courses. Working together like that, it tends to do anything that includes, it's going to get better. And I appreciate the gratitude. And, but I know that you go to national, it's called a national conference, and I think that's important for teachers, but to know what's going on in other parts of the country, not just in Gilmer County. Go see, but that means it's not a part of the state, it's not a part of the country. And I know you're giving those presentations for what you're doing, and I appreciate that. And I think that we, our teachers, we're interested in what's happening anyway.
Absolutely.
And I think on that, we'll get better.
Absolutely, and that's something that's also part of what we're going to be doing next year with M3T. You're going to be onsite classroom visits at each other's schools. So, Morgan and Melissa will have the opportunity to go wherever they can get in touch with another high school teacher or another middle school teacher and set up a peer observation. They go and observe and then have someone in return come observe them.
Okay.
Thank you.
I told Miss West earlier that I was only, only going to bring good cheer tonight, and it seems like everybody is bringing good cheer tonight. What a positive atmosphere we have with all the good things that are going on in our schools. And I attended the award ceremony at the elementary school, and I brought you pictures of the winners of the bicycles. They had to have faithful, perfect attendance in order to be in the drawing for the bicycles.
Macy was doing real. Macy Smith, she called before, as soon as they hit the car wreckers call. Am I, am I? Guess what? Isn't that wonderful? It was.
And we hope that, you know, is an incentive for the kids that they, you know, that they will want. And I'm not going to, you know, discuss anything with attendance tonight. We have about four days of school left. We'll, we'll brainstorm this summer and try to come up with some good ideas, more ideas in order to get. And Ms. West, you know, isn't it so wonderful to think that kids feel like they belong and that they want to be a part, they've found their place? So, that's what we have to do. We just have to work with the kids and figure out what makes it, you know, their, their safe place, their place that they want to be. And, and this isn't with attendance, but it's, we have been, you know, it's kind of like a miracle. Our technology, all of the orders that we placed, and remember at the time, I said, I don't know when this might come in. Everything is in. All of our laptops in the corner, that is a miracle. It really is. And even on top, and that is an example of one of these smart boards, you know, where you see the card that it's on. So, when a LC needs to use it, we just put a pack, or if we have a meeting here, we put a pack. There's one at the elementary school, there's one at the high school, and, which is just a wonderful tool to have, everything we've ordered. And then on top of that, it's kind of even, it's been what, two meetings, I go three meetings, I go. And we did, you all voted for the upgrade, the wire was upgraded in the elementary. Believe it or not, they're coming Wednesday of this week to do that upgrade. And while they're there, we also had a Tools for Schools project, just a small one, at the high school. So, once they finish with the elementary school, they will do the high school, so everything will be held at that point. But then we're ready for July to roll around, and we'll, we'll start operating, and that's, that's been a real blessing to be able to, you know, the tech boys are already imaging the laptops, you know, so we're kind of, I shouldn't say this, but we're kind of attending the case. Y'all have any questions to make with attendance technology? Not personnel.
Get the clock ready for draft.
I'll start with some personality updates. With the security entry to high school, we've got some real good news on that. We're, we're going to have an onsite visit soon with City Construction. Jason McQuain is going to be the project manager with City Construction on that job. He's going to do an onsite meeting when he comes. He must check out the parking situation, where we can store, you know, a trailer or whatever he brings, an office trailer, whatever they'll work out of, whatever they'll keep the tools in, and we'll do that. The notice to commence will be May 30th, and then City Construction will mobilize and come onsite May 31st, with their first day work June 1st. And I know Judy and everybody's talking about good news. When I first started talking about this project a long time ago and many meetings ago, we set June 1st as the target date to start, and that doesn't happen with bids that have to go out, and you're depending on the contractor and things like that, but they are going to start June 1st. What that will do is you guys saw on the contract, it'll have 105 calendar days to work on that with the notice to commence on May 30th. That puts the target end date, or the date they should be ended by, September 12th, which does get into that school year a little bit, but what we're hoping is most of the work is finished by the time the school year starts. They anticipate most of the work being finished early. Of course, they, they won't come out and say that or anything, they're going to stick to that, they have it on September 12th, but they do anticipate that being done early. They will work four tens, they'll work Monday through Thursday, and they'll work 7 to 5:30. So, that's kind of their schedule. With summer school and 26, 27 students in summer school, primarily in the east wing, we've given them full, full operation of that office area and given them the day shift and trying to make this project move as quickly. So, that is the security entry at Gilmer County High School. Any questions on that? With the LED lighting, we're really in the same place where we were last, or meeting, we are basically finished a few loose ends to tie up, just a few screw-in balls, things like that to tie up. I think they're just waiting on. I think as soon as they get them, they'll, they'll be here, they want, they want to be done. Mon Valley wants to be done, they're, they're 99% done. They want to complete it, so we're just tying up a few loose ends. And then as I told you last minute, there'll be a walkthrough, the city, or, uh, city, I'm sorry, Mon Valley, ESG, and then us, and we're going to walk in every room. We, we, there won't be a room we don't walk in, and we'll look at that. We'll make sure all the covers are put back, we'll, we'll make sure nothing's broken, nothing's undone, before we write that off and, and I can quit talking about the LED lighting project. But as I said, it went very well. Any questions about the LED lighting? With, with the HVAC, we're still in the same place, but waiting on units to arrive. And unfortunately, I don't have the new Judy had with the laptops and things like that. They were pushed back, we're still waiting until late July, and unfortunately, that's the last one I received on that. We were supposed to already have the GPS bipolar ionization units, which is supposed to clean the air, to, to add to our existing units. We were supposed to have those last week. I called today to get where we at on that, what are you hearing on that, and they just did not get back to me today. So, look, you know, I, I don't want to say behind, but yeah, behind from the original timeline we were given for math. That work, they are ready, that the folks are ready to do that work as soon as we receive those units, and I'll let the board know when we receive them. But that's where we're at on HVAC. Again, the way I'm standing, Mon Valley will do that work, not the same Mon Valley guys that did our lighting, but a different branch of them, but the same company. And if it can go half as well as the lighting went, that would be good for us, and I think they're ready to go. I think we're just waiting on the material. But that's where we're at on HVAC. Any questions on that? The animal processing classroom beginning at June 13th, that big date, we're getting closer and closer to that date, and, and hopefully the results are good. As I've told you, everything we have heard, I believe everything the superintendent's heard, Clay's heard, I've heard, has all been positive, so we are optimistic. I'm more optimistic than I've ever been before that we will be awarded. If we're not awarded, we do have the plans that we presented to the board, and we'll go from there, and we'll act as soon as we can act. As kind of a part of that project, or not really a part, but has to happen if we're going to do that project, as I told you last board meeting, we've been in contact with SLS about some drainage issues out back there. We, we've got to fix some drainage, drainage issues, obviously, for the most part, the biggest leak in the building. Start back at the dumpster in the kitchen area and go all the way to the vocational side of the building. We do have drainage issues, and we need to fix that anyways. We're now sending our parents out back, that's the bus loop, and that, that's helped transportation tremendously. Mr. Puffman made that change, it's been a positive change. So, it's work that needs to happen anyways, just to improve our property, but it has to happen on that, on that animal processing center classroom. We do from time to time, not all the time, but from time to time, we do receive a little bit of water in that classroom, and we know we cannot have that happen with this project. So, that will be addressed. I'm sure it'll be a money value once we get to it that will have to be approved by the board. And so, you, you, we bring you something to that with competitive bids and bring it to this board to vote on how we will address those drainage issues that I'm referring to out back. The talks with Smith answering right now are just simply for them to design, to get a fee for them to design that plan that we would bid out. They're the experts, and, and they live that stuff every day, and we don't. So, if it, the fees we're negotiating with them right now would be to give us a design to draw up this project for us to bid it out, and we may have to bid it out in phases. We may have to have like a phase one, a phase two. Phase one right now in my mind, another in my mind, obviously, Ms. Board to Jay there, would be the animal processing side, because we know that's going to happen in the near future, and we know that has to be addressed. From those steps out back to, back towards the kitchen area, I, I believe we can do some work there to address some of the major issues that are happening right now with a little bit of work on our own. I think we could address those, not forever, but to, to maintain if, if needed. We.
So, this, the drainage issues, will that come out of the allocated money toward the H shop, or will that come out of California?
It will come out of, right now, and depending how much that money is, Dr. Melissa, as you directed, right now, we still have some monies in the, in the levee underground maintenance or, or that, and there is a pot of money there. Now, I, we are hoping that this stays under that, and if it stays under that, and again, I don't want to speak for Clay, but it's my understanding, the money will come out of that pot. If the money, the money will not come out of what's allocated to the plant for the animal processing. It will not come out of that, but it is something we do have to address the school system before we, before we do that. I hope that answered your question. And, and what we're trying to do with, with Smith there, and that's part of the negotiation back and forth, and they're, they've been very good, communicated very well, sent a, a representative promptly, the phone calls back and forth, but, but I also want them to give us a ballpark figure. It's not something we can hold them to, because we're going to have to bid it out, but, but I don't want them to spend, you know, days, weeks, whatever, designing this plan that we can't afford, and maybe we can't have the Cadillac version. We always want the Cadillac version, but, but maybe we can't have it. So, so, because there's all kinds of things you could do out there. We could dig into that bank, we could widen the road, we could pipe it all, or, or does it, it's slow. There's all kinds of things, and, and at the end of the day, paving needs to happen back there. But, but if we address the ditch issue, the drainage issue, that will, that will allow us to move forward with monthly. But I'll, I'll bring that back to you. I'm sure, I'm sure we'll have whatever we plan to do with SLS next board meeting.[1757.64] By then, at least a plan to look at that and then give you an update.
What you're going, now it's really being addressed.
Yes, sir. And it's really the lane to the back building. About eight hard grain, if you drove back to Loop, you'll, you'll see really quick what I'm talking about. The, the last thing I have is the storage building. And I, I didn't attend the budget workshop today. I know Clay talked to you sometime. I had no idea what was said, what was not said, had no idea how the board will vote tonight. But it is a storage building at Gilmer Elementary. And, and that's, that's the biggest need of that facility right now. It's really been the biggest need of that facility since day one of that facility. We don't have anywhere to store anything. That nice tarp that Mr. Price was talking about earlier, we probably need a place to put that and, and things like that. Clay and I have had discussions about it with the superintendent. And again, I don't know what the board will vote tonight, whichever way they go. And, and we'll figure it out whichever way the board goes. But I do believe in this budget that will be proposed to you tonight. He has us the ability and, and has that built in where we would be able to purchase that storage building for, for, for Gilmer Elementary. And we moved on that as quick as we could, but, but we'll see what happens tonight later with the agenda with the budget. But if that were to be passed, that's something we'd move forward fairly quick. And if it's not to be passed, then, then we'll go to Plan B and, and work from there on that. But I just wanted to mention that because that's probably going to be a standing item here for a while for me to get made on that facility, on that storage building. Yes, sir.
Question on the floor, Calvary. It will be, again, not the permanent structure on the inside of the gymnasium like rolled up and you have to roll it down.
That's a good question. No, sir. It's going to be on a cart and be on wheels. And what this has, it will have about eight rollers. And each roll is going to have about an eight foot wide tarp on it, basically rolled up. It'll look like just a big canvas roll on a spindle. It'll have that winder and we'll be able to wind it and not wind it. We can put it wherever we need it. We're also getting a cover for it. Right now, we're getting a, like a gray colored cover that will go on and that these manufacturers of the cart will, will sell us. So it will look more nice. But for right now, where we will put this is in the gymnasium in the back corner. And that's where I'll talk with our P E teachers and we would have to live with it for a while if we decide to go forward with it before the bill.
But it is something that rolls up onto a cart, you could put it anywhere you need to.
Yes, and whenever, that's absolutely correct. And whenever I provide you that information with those quotes, you'll have pictures and samples of the material for at least two out of the three, I'll provide you with a sample of the material.
Sounds very similar to what we have at the high school. Other than the high school's a little old school, we still crank it down. We've, we've got the eight or nine rolls, but it's a hand crank. And if this comes out, it's near as nice as Mr. Price has presented. Just getting ready, I'm sure the high school will be coming to you at some point with a new floor covering system. You just don't have to get them a building to store it. We do have a room. But it sounds, sounds real nice. And I do agree with him, it's very much me. We do need to protect this, we want to take care of. There are all kinds of things that happen with these floors, not, not just athletics. But that's, that's all I have. Let's have time for me. Anybody time for me? There were several questions. All right.
Yeah, I was like.
I'm the next thing on the agenda. First thing I've got to say, the one thing I would like to have to get everybody to know is a ready school nurse who would like to have a job, they need somebody desperately at Career Center. And we're having trouble finding anybody. I expect that on the list of board meetings. One other thing I think, for our young people, they, they are offering a system to say. They're great. It's what daddy, you understand? They are offering, I think we're offering that.
We, all of our sixth graders take a hunter safety class. So we, we started this year, we went back, the last two years we couldn't because of COVID. But this year they did have hunter safety. So every sixth grade student is afforded the opportunity to have hunter safety. Yes.
I don't know, hunting and we changed it. It's a virtual now.
Less good.
Less messy.
Just have to have a physical to do esports.
That's your basketball, physically. Okay. That's all I have for the Career Center. We'll move on to the new families now. And we want to see that three policy. You want one of the adolescent, that's the person that's selling.
Well, the, the 2120 is for approval. We, we had a few comments, but nothing that really pertained to this. This is where we are, are trying to, for approval to match 3140. So they kind of go hand in hand, 2120 and 3140. They do go hand in hand at the high school and we discussed that. So I would, I would suggest we do both of them together for approval. In policy 1030, the highlighted area, I would recommend that we place it back out on review for another 30 days because we did send this to Bowles and Rice. And the highlighted on page three and four is their language that they would recommend to put in. So we can send it back out from public comment again. Just to send it back for a public comment for additional 30 days.
So moved.
Yes.
I'll second it. I just, third paragraph down, third sentence down. Board members shall refrain from engaging in dialogue with delegation.
Which, what page, Dr. Miller?
Third paragraph, third sentence.
You, you, you don't want it in there?
No, it says board members shall refrain from engaging in dialogue, delegation should be dialogue with delegation.
Oh, okay. We'll, we'll fix that when we set it up. And then you have a letter from Joe Frazier about requesting approval to sell bus 60, 62, and 64.
No, all of our, all of our buses, for years now, been 77 passenger. What that is, trying to say it 19 total buses. We have 14 buses that run every day. We call those our regular buses. We like to keep five spares. We received one also already this year. Our other new bus should be done in June. So two of those that are passing to sale are just simply selling the two older ones or two in worse shape because we just received, we've already seen one new one. We should receive the second new one in June. The third bus there is actually a bus that we would be very kind and give to, I guess, the county, even though we're already elderly, I said, I guess not here. But we're going to use this as our local feeding bus. But since the start of that project, we've kind of switched gears and went with that, that vehicle that you were going, you were going through last meeting and we just missed. Shelley's presented this for a couple of times about it. That turtle vehicle or whatever, that's going to be, you can take it to the swimming pool and you can grow up. We have meals, we bring kids, we'll do some educational activities and feed them. We were going to remodel a bus and make that happen on the bus. And that's, that's the third rule there because we have switched gears. So two are just simply we're selling because we received two new ones. The other one is one we would have sold a long time ago, one for that child. But the whole idea is to say 19 total buses, 14 regular buses, five spares. We don't need any more than that. Any more than that, we are, are bus value, are fleet value. Do you appreciate it because it's not worth as much? And, and in fact, we've been to the whole money thing, how much we receive in bus allotment. There's a formula for that. Anything over 12 years old, anything over 180,000 miles, we get nothing in that formula. And you can have to have them inspected twice a year. And when that same trucker comes and says you have to fix it, even if you don't ride it, the cost of maintaining them is very, very expensive. So, which is not usual. And it's again, trying to say 19 total buses.
That's what I'm saying. That, that was my question. That's very good.
That, that is, that's correct.
If you're not a key number 64 to use the project.
No.
No, no, sir. But we're asking them for permission to sell all three of those, 60, 62, and 64.
Well, you have one that you're going to sell, you're going to give.
We are not. We, we switched gears in that project and I don't want to say exactly what we're bidding, but Shelley presented and we actually, you guys approved it. We just missed a vote on a vehicle that would be perfect, but what we're going to do.
Like the little bus thing that she was.
It, it's all.
And, and that's, that's, that's the way we're going to go. It's a better, I, I'm in full agreement with Mr. Mason. It's a better approach. It's more feasible, it's more durable for this feeding bus. And, and I think we'll make it happen as soon as we find a video. The board has been very supportive the last meeting that you talked about.
The one we need is, yes, just to include that.
Yes.
She said it, but.
We have no unfinished business or old business. And then personnel. Do you want me to separate them out? What's, okay. Okay, under professional, Jacob Persinger, substitute teacher, Gilmer County Schools. Mary Frye, special education teacher at Gilmer County High School, retirement effective June 30th. Jesse Broussard, music teacher, Gilmer County High School, resignation effective June 30th. Karen McLean, middle school, social studies, Gilmer County High School, resignation effective 630. And Willard Wright, science teacher, Gilmer County High School, retirement effective May 31st, 2022.
Okay, these professionals personnel. The main is definitely to create professionals part of the discussion. I would hope that somebody there said something to recognize.
Oh, we are. We're, yes. Service, Molly Ellen Mini, substitute classroom slash protection agent. Okay, now I'm not doing. Frank Postaway, prior service credit, one year. He is our new janitor at Gilmer County High School. And he has requested one year service, prior service credit for his income. Extracurricular, no interviews yet for the Mini Titan Head Girls basketball coach. John T. Fox, Mini Titan Boys basketball auxiliary, auxiliary coach, resignation effective May 12th. Jason Stewart, Mini Titan Head Baseball Coach, resignation effective May 17th. Willard Wright, varsity track coach, girls and boys, retirement effective May 31st, 2022. Um, they're, they have, Joe, you have, you have applicants for the Mini Titans basketball coach, correct?
We do, yes. We just need the interview to bring the board a recommendation. Mr. Mason, that should happen next board meeting. We, we, we should bring it forward for all of us next board meeting.
Yes. Yes, we'll bring that back, yes. Then, permission to post as Director of Students Support Services. It will encompass special education, which I'm now doing, but it's also going to be an alternative learning center and the other activities such as the communities and schools, the mental health aspect of it, which has all come about in the last two years. Stuff that Mrs. Mason has been doing to help with that responsibility. And that's why it's titled Director of Students Support Services 504 because all of those are the support services for our students, not just special ed, but the other A L C, the community and schools, the mental health, the 504, and the academic fairs, which is all student support, someone to be in charge of that. So permission to post.
So moved.
I just have one thing under superintendent information. There is a planned power outage, but Lisa has checked with Eric Squires and it will not affect any of our schools nor the central office on Wednesday. We were a little panicked because that was the senior assembly from eight to two, but it's not going to affect it now. So we're very thankful about that. So we don't have to rearrange all that stuff. So busy last week, graduation, it's this Friday. Seniors will be back. They'll have their senior assembly where they'll get their cords and their, their honors. And they're also going to go to the elementary and visit with them on Wednesday. And so we're, we're excited to be winding down another school year.
I was wondering about broadcasting meetings on like Facebook Live.
We're actually looking into that. What we will have to do, we, we've talked with Techno, with Tracy and some of the guys, is going to take a different camera setup. So what we were, were looking at was getting a price to you with the cost of what it would cost to have a camera because it's going to be different than this. And then microphones and wiring that and someone to do that. And we were looking at setting it up through a live tube through like, what we have, YouTube Live, like, like we do the, the sporting events. Yes. That way they would have access and it would, but it, we are looking into it right now and trying to get prices. Lisa also checked with other counties for me. McDowell uses Owl Labs and Zoom Teams. Marion used Swagit. Wetzel County does not live stream, they just record, then they post to YouTube. Pleasant County uses Teams during COVID, but not using it any longer. Same thing with Nicholas County and Calhoun County does not do live stream. So we have reached out to other counties to see what they're using. So we are checking in on that. Yeah, and our videos are posted now on our, yes. So we we do have a section to post it, it's just not live streaming at the moment. But they are posted as soon as we can get them to that area.
To set up a room basically for that.
Yeah, there'll have to be. Yes. Yeah, so it'll have to be a camera in the back of the room that hit the front of the room. And each one of you will have to have your own microphone to where they can hear what was going on.
One thing I was going to say that. First one step, because I know we need like example, like in the high school when they did the play. Personal sound equipment, you know, maybe we could get microphones or something that we'd be able to use for a theater production at the high school.
Okay. Yeah, they have a wonderful one.
Yeah, we've got a pretty nice sound system.
They had to borrow, I think it was Mr. Putnam's personal microphones and stuff for the play because they didn't have anything to use.
Yeah, I I put down sound system. Okay.
TJ and Connor do not think that they have the ability to do this. We had a technology meeting today and nobody has discussed the streaming with me. I think Patty has spoken to TJ and Connor, uh Tracy, and of course Lisa's involved. But nobody had addressed that issue with me to where I had the opportunity to opportunity to check into it today at the meeting was the first time that I was made aware that anybody was even entertaining that thought. And I believe it is more complicated.
It is.
Than what it appears like it would be. And so there does need to be extensive research done. And I don't know anything about it, but they would just be convenient. They just think that they, there needs to be like an audio person that does that type of work in order to actually set it up to where it is what it needs to be in order to, you know, actually stream.
And that would also mean like redoing those tables and certain stuff. I mean, it it's it's pretty intensive. We just scratched the surface, just, I know we noticed the the comments on Facebook. And so we're just kind of scratching the surface of it and just to see where we we are. And it's it's going to be, like Ms. Donner said, it is going to be intensive to get it going.
But that's not saying that that it couldn't be done. But it probably would take somebody outside of our system to come in and to figure out what we would need and the cost of what we would need.
Like I said, we just started scratching the surface, just barely, just barely.
Scratch my surface. In our technology meeting.
Liberal Presbyterian livestreams their service every Sunday with an iPad.
It's the quality. I mean, if you're just trying to get the the.
But Trinity first, the Methodist church downtown, they have a little bit more equipment. So that might be somebody that.
I I know First Baptist does and Sanford Baptist does. They're all starting to livestream, but it's, I mean, if you really. Yeah, the quality, yes, yes, yes.
But Braxton Live, what I was going to say, just to group and then dear, uh Braxton Live and the production that they do in River and Braxton County, if we can get hooked up with them, and I'm not saying, you know, we're looking to spend, you know, a thousand dollars or something just for this meeting. Maybe it can be more evident, we can take it out and do other events, whether it be a concert or a play or a basketball or football game or something and and use that money to maybe go around.
And we just, like I said, we just barely just scratching the surface to see what was out there. And we're like, fuck, there was so much.
People to stream.
Yes.
Everything. Nobody wants to go to anything, they just want to sit home and watch.
Since COVID, yes, yes.
Ball games, meetings, whatever.
But yeah, we will check into that and go get back.
I just had one other concern and I mean, I have an answer, but it's my understanding that using Mrs. Person and to set off a chain of events to where we now don't have anyone to teach help. So we're going to cut our driver's ed, but only one class next year, which would only take thirteen kids.
They're working on that. And they're also looking at providing a summer offering of driver's ed. So the kids can take it and not fill up one of their electives. So Mr. Putnam, he's on here, but um Mr. Putnam and Mr. Reed, they have been working on schedule along with Shelley Mason to try to figure out how to offer this driver's ed to kids. Yes, we have to offer it. We don't have to offer five sections of it, but to offer it a time that they could take it in the summer or in the evening to where they could get their other classes as well as the driver's ed. So they are looking at that schedule, yes. The resignations that like the music, he is moving. Um Mrs. McLean has told me, she said that's her second career and she's ready to retire again. So it it's it's, you know, the reasons that they're moving is like Mr. Broussard, but I think he's getting married and moving somewhere else. And Mrs. McLean, yeah, always already married, okay, I didn't. And then, of course, Willard's retiring, so. But we will get back to you on the schedule once they they do figure some more stuff out. Yes.
You'll work on that.
Yes.
How many counties, state, please?
Well, I know. No, I know Lewis County, when they livestream, I know Kim Bonnet does that and she's a WEA representative. So she just uses her personal phone and livestreams. You cannot hear it at all, it's very difficult to follow. A lot of them did during COVID, but they've kind of stopped that. And if they do anything, it's teams.
There's not a requirement or staying on required for towards much free.
No, there was a bill up, there was a bill up and it was defeated. So look for it again next year. So we might as well get ahead of the game and get the equipment because I don't think it was defeated by very much.
People got used to just very COVID.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we'll keep looking.
All right. Anybody else have a question for the board?
Now, if I just leave, it'll stop, right?